I would like to open the public meeting of the Falmouth Public Schools School Committee Agenda for March 10th, 2020. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I remind everyone that this meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as the chair, and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law.
I'll be doing so for the enterprise.
Thank you, sir. I had to look around there, but thank you. Fishbowl, please.
Adele at Mullen Hall, I love my teachers because my library media teacher is kind and listens to us. That's Adele. This is Ella from Lawrence School. My teacher encourages us to listen and learn and to never give up. And last but not least, the high school. Riley from the high school. Clipper Time has helped me by giving me more time to get help from my teachers.
Thank you. The mission of the Falmouth Public Schools is to educate students so that they're engaged in their education in a way which develops their capacity to pursue their goals and foster lifelong learning. The three core beliefs which define us as a school system and enable us to accomplish our mission are: continuous improvement for students, teachers, staff, and administrators; enthusiasm for teaching and learning; collaboration in teaching and learning. The role of the school committee is threefold: to write policy, to approve the operating budget, to hire the superintendent and support her in carrying out her initiatives for the district. Public comment. Please limit comments to two minutes per individual to items not on the meeting agenda. There will be no debate or no action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement or the individually requested item to be placed on the future agenda. Any public comments, please. We will move on. Presentation of highlight of education, Falmouth High School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mary Gans, as I say, the very proud principal of Falmouth High School. I have some handouts tonight. We're talking about the Bridge Program. And I do have a presentation here, but I'm not going to go through each slide. I know that we are slated for 10 minutes. I'd rather have you hear from the people who are really the heart of the program, and they are kind enough to be here. We have several parents and several Bridge alumni students and two staff members, Ms. Fauth and Ms. Noonan, who Ms. Fauth is the clinical coordinator and Ms. Noonan is the TA academic coordinator. Quickly, I will just say, you all have known about the Bridge Program. And the need came about because we had a lot of students who were being hospitalized typically for a mental health reason. And when they got discharged from the hospital, we really didn't have something for them at the high school to support them as they transitioned back to school. And so what was happening was students were being home hospital tutored, and the longer they were out of school, the harder it was for them to get back into school. And Ms. Fauth actually, probably about six years ago, when I first met her while we were both working at the Lawrence School, was telling me, "You have to look into this Bright Program. You have to look into this Bright Program." And I poo-pooed it for a couple of years, and I finally went to a workshop, and I was like, "Oh, my goodness. Ms. Fauth actually knows what she's talking about." I didn't mean it that way. And so we really started talking about it and figuring out how we would make it work. And the previous superintendent, Superintendent Taylor, basically said, "Well, reallocate what you have and make it work." And so we did, and we have a program which is currently over capacity based on what the Bright model recommends. But I have to give huge credit to Ms. Noonan and Ms. Fauth. And also, we have another TA who supports the program, Ms. Negri, who's not here tonight, because they just make it run like a well-oiled machine and never complain, even though they are busy from the minute the school bell rings in the morning until after the school bell rings at the end of the day. So I don't know how you want to... I'd like to have all these people introduce themselves. Should I have them come up here, or... Oh, sorry, everybody.
Should we go off and kind of tell a little bit about?
Okay, yes. So in your handouts too, I've given you, there's a brochure, there's an overview. Here, I can show you myself what's... There's the intake form that they use. Typically, what happens is, if you go right to Slide 8... Oh, Sharon. Oh, it's on this phasing thing. What happens is, we typically find out that a student has been hospitalized. So before the student is even discharged, the Bridge Program starts. And if you two want to come up and talk about that, that'd be great.
Should we stand right here? Or in the center? Where do people typically stand? It's their first time. So as you just heard, it is a program that's... We're in our third year right now. It started out of Brookline High School about 15 years ago. They partnered with Brookline Mental Health Center to face this mental health challenge that started, you know, really taking hold about 15 years ago. So now it's in close to 200 high schools and some junior highs. There's even a few elementary schools that are using this program throughout the state of Massachusetts. There's a few in Connecticut. And the Bright team out of Brookline just started. There's a few schools in Oregon that they were just traveling. And so it's really spreading throughout the country. So I can speak for both of us, because we talk about it all the time. We feel so lucky to be on this train of wellness and how to support students and families at what they say is the most challenging point in their lives. So it kind of says it right here, the overview. It's a short-term general ed program, eight to 12 weeks. And a student would come to us two different ways. One would be if they are missing a large amount of days due to their mental health struggles. The other would be they're in a hospital for a suicide attempt or suicidal thoughts, and they need, you know, their anxiety, depression is so severe that they need to be in a hospital, a day program or an overnight. And when they get discharged, that two-week period is the most critical time for, to prevent a relapse. All research shows that that two weeks is when most students would return back to the hospital. We have data supporting that as well here at Falmouth High School that before this, people would come back, you know, they'd meet with their guidance counselors, who were all well-intended but doing a million other things, and say, "Okay, here's some work that you need to make up. Get back to class." And they would, it would be the worst time to have that kind of stress. So what we do between the two of us, therapeutic, I'm a school adjustment counselor, Ms. Noonan, academic coordinator, the two of us, reach out when they're in the hospital. So I would talk to the clinicians at the hospital, call the family. And actually, when I was thinking about what to say to you tonight, that's my favorite moment, is when I can call a family and say, "I'm so sorry for what you're going through. This program exists at Falmouth High School, and there's other families that are going through this. And what we do is support you through this." And Ms. Noonan talks to the tutors at the hospital. So a lot of programs have tutoring. She has to talk to all of the teachers, get all the assignments, fax them, email them to the tutor at the hospital. So that's kind of how it all starts. And then the families know that we are their direct contact from that point forward. They enter Falmouth High School. We have an intake meeting with their guidance counselor, school nurses, if there's medication pieces, the two of us. And we kind of map out their plan for the eight to 12 weeks. And by that point, Ms. Noonan has talked to every teacher and knows exactly, you know, what's going on in each course and when is a new chapter starting. So Suzie can start next week, not this week, you know, in the middle of something. So...
In their packet is the work tracker.
Oh, awesome. Thank you, Ms. Gans.
For a sample work tracker.
So, do you love your new packet? It's right here. Kind of tells you how, what goes out through the Google Doc from Ms. Noonan so that teachers can fill this out, say when they would like a student back in their class. And another amazing thing is that the teacher will come to the Bridge Program and sit and have these, you know, more heart-to-heart conversations with their student, which takes the teacher out of that academic setting and really kind of meets the kid where they're at in our space, which is a different kind of looking space than a classroom in a lot of ways. Ms. Noonan, I'm rambling. Do you want to...
I actually don't have anything to add, because I think that I would love for you to hear from parents and students rather than any more from us. We just love what we get to do. We've both been with the program since it started, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
So, students, do you want to... So we have Maggie, Michaela, and Sam, who, if you guys want to come up and...
Yay!
These are all three students who've been through the Bridge Program.
They're all graduates.
All graduates.
We call them alumni.
We call them alumni, and alumni have rules about, you know, their parameters of their access to the Bridge Program. But they've been wonderful, and they act as role models and even often tutors to other students who are in the program. So do you want to bring parents up at the same time and talk to them? Or students, I'm totally open to how... I know we're limited for time. That's why I don't want to... Well, do you guys want to talk about what the Bridge Program did to you?
And when they graduate, they cross the preschool bridge, and it's really cute. And there's a little ceremony, and all the Bridge alumni and active members come and celebrate, and they make a special little handprint. It sounds childish, but I think that they all say it feels like a nice celebration of a huge accomplishment.
That's me! Well, I'll start off. I'm Magnolia. I'm a senior here at Falmouth High School. And I was first hospitalized freshman year before the Bridge Program was really a thing. I think it was just starting out, but wasn't official. I was hospitalized around December of that year and came back to school January, some midpoint in January. And there was nothing in place, really. I tried to go back to classes full-time. That didn't work so well. Was not very efficient for me, my mental state, or just the anxiety and stress of all the work, as well as the other students asking us where we've been. Like, "Oh, where were you?" and having to explain to them, or not explain to them. You know, "I was out, and, you know, I'm not like normal," or, you know, whatever you chose to say. I ended up being tutored after attempting to be in school. And so for the rest of that year, I was just kind of at home. I would meet at libraries or Starbucks with tutors. And that made me pass, which was good enough for me. But it wasn't... I never got back to school that year. The entire rest of the year, January to June, I wasn't there. The next year, I came in knowing of the Bridge Program. My parents had reached out. I think we were told by someone, and it changed everything. I was able to come back sophomore year, full force. You know, it's a rocky road, but it was so much better, and I was actually in school, which was the important part. And it just, it was night and day. Like, I don't know what I would do without it. I ended up being re-hospitalized, though, February of that year. And then I was welcomed back at the end of the Bridge Program, and ever since then, I've been healthy and happy, so...
Okay, so I'm Michaela. I'm a senior. And similar to Maggie, my hospitalizations and problems took place freshman year. So I actually wasn't put into Bridge until coming back from my third hospitalization. So I had already, similar to my... Come back to school twice, and they just kind of... Like, the school didn't really know what to do with us as they were explaining. They were doing the best that they could, but we didn't have anything equipped to deal with this issue. And obviously, there are multiple students that were going through it, so it wasn't even just me. And they would just kind of be like, "All right, do your work." And, you know, sometimes I would stay out of class to do work. Sometimes I would try to go to class. But I feel like even when I was given alone time to do work, I wasn't getting that emotional support. So trying to do schoolwork felt so unimportant and so impossible, because how am I supposed to focus on math when I've been through so much? And I may have gotten a little bit of temporary help, but I've just been thrown back into this world that sent me there in the first place. So when I came back, I was put into Bridge, and it did everything to me. I had been told that I was going to have to stay back, that it was just too much. I had missed way too much school, and I was getting similar questions from my friends, from other students. "Where were you? You're only here like once a week," or whatever. And it just felt so terrible, and I really thought that I would have to stay back. But I actually didn't. I only went to one day of summer school, and I spent the entire month of like May-June making up all of my work, and I was able to pass. And like, now I'm going off to college and doing things like that, which is terrifying not having the Bridge Program. But they've also set up stuff in place. Like, I know what works for me, and I can go into college, into the disabilities office, and explain that these are the things that I've been given, and this is how I know how to succeed. And I'm hoping that they'll be kind to me and give me what I need.
And it's amazing, too, because a lot of us going into high school and going into the hospital didn't believe we'd live past like 16, 17. So we never thought we would even be going to college, considering college as an option. And here we are, like, about to like go out into the world. It's crazy, but it's really awesome.
All right. Hello, my name is Sam. I am a junior here. About two years ago, I moved here from Minnesota. At my old school, like, so like during my freshman year, halfway, like through the year. And at my old school, there wasn't really anything like the Bridge Program in place. So like, when I went to the hospital, it was kind of like, well, like, when I went to the hospital, it was there. But when I got back from the hospital, it was kind of like hard, because they didn't have anything. Like, you could see the guidance counselor, but like, if they were available.
Yeah.
And most of the time, they weren't. So you were kind of like, they were kind of like throwing it out there and be like, "Have fun!" But, yeah, so that was pretty hard. But during my sophomore year, which was last year, I was hospitalized. And it was a lot better with like the Bridge Program. Like, they helped me kind of get more comfortable with coming to school after it. I kind of knew that I had a good support system, so I was kind of like, I could rely on the program. And they helped me get like caught up with all my schoolwork. And not really like, well, going to school, like, you're really like, "Yes, I want to go to school." But it makes you want to come to school more than it would without it. So that really helped me and definitely has made me like a lot more stronger and comfortable with situations. And it's also kind of good that you get to kind of like meet other students.
Yeah.
I wouldn't know Michaela or Maggie, because like, they're seniors, so I don't have any classes with them. So I obviously met them in the Bridge Program, and it's kind of nice, like, knowing that you aren't the only one going through stuff. And it's kind of nice that you can relate to stuff, so...
There are a lot of things that you never thought you would ever relate to another human being with on things. And then we're in the Bridge Program talking about, "Oh, yeah, like, I remember that." Like, something that happened in the hospital or whatever. It's really awesome. And I think the Bridge Program also opens up a whole new relationship with your teachers, which is very important. Because to me, teachers were an authority figure that were very intimidating and scary, because they were like, "Oh, they're the ones in charge of my ability to graduate." So it's like, don't want to mess with that. But meeting with them, with our backups as Ms. Fauth or Ms. Noonan, just made us feel more confident about talking to them, safer, not in the way that we didn't feel safe, but just more comfortable with it. And just makes it so much easier to then talk to them yourselves later on in the year when you're not a Bridge patient necessarily, you're an alumni. Because we, as alumnis, we can use the Bridge Room itself. We can talk to Ms. Fauth if need be. We do our mental check-ins when we come in.
That's in your packet, too. It's called a mindful check-in.
But, you know, and we don't really necessarily get academic help unless we specifically ask for it, and normally, it's just a small thing. But I know that the Bridge Program was always there for me, no matter what. And I cannot describe how important that is, especially staying there during lunches or your study periods. Yeah. Study periods are great. I'm in there practically every day with my study. And it's just a nice reset to continue on with everything, so...
Absolutely. So these are obviously three awesome students who are just role models for current Bridge students and for other students in the high school, too, that you've just come so far and have done so well. And Sam's mom is here, and Michaela's mom is here, as well as a couple of other parents. Do you want, would you like to ask them questions or hear them?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
This is Michaela's mom here and Sam's mom. Ms. Caswell and Mr. O'Conne.
I'm Dennis O'Conne. My daughter Abby is a ninth grader. She suffers from amitophobia, which is the fear of vomit, which, you know, nobody likes that, but this is beyond that. And it manifests itself as separation anxiety and OCD. And she was completely unable to come to school for the first couple of weeks. And then I was sitting in, with her in the Bridge Program while we were on a waitlist for a outpatient program up in Boston. So after about two and a half months of driving up to Boston every single day, after she was in school for the first half of the day, she's doing much better now. You know, the Bridge Program got her into school. It gave us a foothold to be here while she was going through this process. And now it provides her all the support she needs to get to all of her classes. So that's the short of it.
Jennifer, I'm Michaela's mom. As she said freshman year, she was out for quite some time, three hospitalizations. She basically left school in November and didn't return until the end of April. I know she says that she passed the year. She finished the year with a 3.85 GPA. She did just pass the year. This year, she's hovering somewhere around a 3.9.
We don't even talk about SAT scores.
Yeah, she's hovering somewhere around a 3.9. She has acceptances to UConn and Syracuse already. I used to have panic attacks every time the phone rang, because it would be the school telling me that my daughter's on the way to the ER again. And just the anxiety from her of trying to keep up with schoolwork and still focus on her mental health was awful. And now, when I get a phone call from the school, it's usually Ms. Fauth telling me something amazing she's done, or the tutoring she's doing with another kid, or sometimes just a check-in to make sure that I'm okay. So, yeah, definitely, the Bridge Program has gotten us both here today.
And Deb, and Sam is my son. We had two very different experiences, one in Minnesota, which really was, we met with the guidance counselor, and it was, "Here's your classes. Go to it." Here, it's, Ms. Noonan helped them know, "Okay, these are your priorities. Work on these first." Ms. Fauth was there. And what they really do is a bridge, because they learn skills while they're in the different hospitalization. But here, when they come back, Ms. Fauth is like, "Okay, what are you doing? What steps should you take next?" So reinforcing what they learned in a short time so that they can use it over their lifetime. So this is, this is huge. And if he's having trouble, when he first was like, "Just get to Bridge and go from there." And sometimes he'd get to Bridge, and it's like, "Well, I can get to class." It was knowing that somebody cared for him. So it's huge. You really have a great program going on.
I'm Erin Caswell, so I have a unique experience where my daughter was hospitalized twice in her high school career. One time without the Bridge Program, the second time with, and it's invaluable. Like, so she, the first time, it was for one week in her sophomore year. It was her first time, and we were so like flabbergasted, you know, that this happened, and we were struggling. And Katie, just like, she, well, this is actually before Katie. When she re-entered the high school and we didn't have Katie in the Bridge Program, it was like, "Re-enter, here are your classes." This is what you need to catch up on, that you were behind for schoolwork. But then it's also what you need to catch up on with the instruction that you didn't even get. So you're, so talk about anxiety and depression, which my daughter was diagnosed with. You double-fold that with that, and for her to succeed in that re-entry was almost, was very difficult. So the second time with Katie in the Bridge Program, it was so, her junior year, which is a difficult academic year, and two weeks of hospitalization, I was panicking as a parent. And she, Katie got in touch with me and said, "Hey, there's this new Bridge Program. You're not obligated to join it, but this is what it involves." It was invaluable. So it was, she had contact with all the teachers and was catching her up with her schoolwork that she was behind on, but also made it where if she felt anxious about coming back to school, that she could go back to Katie and Ms. Noonan with the Bridge Program and feel very comfortable and confident with re-entering the school. So my daughter now is a freshman in college and thriving. So all those, all those skills that she learned in the hospital setting and with Katie, she's just doing very well. So this is just an invaluable program.
Thank you. So that's the Bridge Program. I mean, I think the downside of the Bridge Program is the fact that we have so many students who need the mental health support. But the upside is that we have this wonderful program that obviously has been incredibly successful with 99.9% of the students who've gone through it. Every year, we serve between 25 and 35 students in the Bridge Program, which is significant. So are there any questions for anybody? I know you're limited for time, so...
How do you explain to the kids in the classroom that their friend and co-student is out? Like, how do you, what's the conversation that you have with the rest of the class to help welcome and to not make it weird and awkward when the student comes back?
Katie can speak to that better than I can. We often leave it, we coach the student who's returning, what is the story that they want to tell about their lives?
Yes, and so the teacher themselves wouldn't speak to the class just because the student gets the chance to talk to their friends. Or, and to be honest, in high school, sometimes they just slip in and kids just keep on going. Some classes where they're really connected, they would say to their peers, like, "This is what I went through." A few students have chosen to say, "I was sick," and leave it at that. So, but we work really closely with the student, like for each class and with each teacher, on the dynamic of the class. You know, if it's a computer class and everyone's kind of doing their own thing, you might just be able to jump on in. If it's a Socratic seminar or small group English class where there's lots of conversation and it's like the huge elephant in the room, then it's an appropriate conversation. But it's always directed by the student and the family, like what they are comfortable with. And so when, but when someone's out and the teacher, you know, gets questions, like, "Where are they?" They say, "Oh, they're out," you know.
I just want to make sure that it's the student's story to tell and not like...
Oh, yeah.
Would you say that all the students, the majority of students at Falmouth High School, are knowledgeable of the Bridge Program and why there is a Bridge Program?
Yes.
So if a student comes in and uses the term, "I'm in the Bridge Program," it's a pretty good idea that, okay, there's some concerns, we need to support this kid.
Yes, we've even gotten to the point, though, where we, even when a student maybe has been just out for a week with the flu, we'll get a letter from a doctor saying, "The student, the Bridge Program would benefit this student." Okay, the word is out there that the Bridge Program is awesome, but we can't take everybody. But we do, we have parents who called and will say, "My child is being hospitalized. I heard about the Bridge Program. Can you tell me more about it?" And sure, definitely, the word is out there.
So I have two questions. So the first is, so this is the third year, is that right? Okay, so if the alumni can still access the program in the room, but you only have really two years of alumni, do you have the capacity that you need? Because you're going to have more and more alumni that are accessing service on top of the growing demand and the growing need for kids who are truly just coming out of... I guess I'm, you know, I'm just wondering how you... Do you need more people?
We need more people. No, well, the alumni, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Fauth and Ms. Noonan or the students, their level of need and support is at a lower level than the other students. And quite frankly, I mean, I've been in there and I've seen, you know, Michaela or Maggie even talking to current Bridge students. And just that alone, for them to know and understand what someone else is going through and be able to talk to a colleague or a peer who's been through it is incredible. We do have two rooms, and Katie's clinical office is in the middle. We have two classrooms. So this year, we didn't always have that. The space is larger, and we do have another TA dedicated to it. So I don't want to say, yeah, the alumni add to it. I think actually the Bridge intakes, they're just, oh my gosh, every week, we seem to have a new Bridge intake. So, and it's, you know, someone's, it's six weeks into the program, so we get a new person or two new people. So it's always ongoing, but it's...
Because you definitely don't want to ever turn someone back.
Right. It's a very hard...
So you need the capacity.
Right, we need the capacity, yes.
Okay, so then my second question is that with being so like at the max of your capacity, then it is... I guess I'm thinking, there must be kids on the radar. of your capacity, then it is, I guess I'm thinking, there must be kids on the radar that you're like, that kid is at risk of being hospitalized and then needing the bridge room. What can we do upstream before they fall in the river? Um, but if you're already at your max, how, is that something that you try to do? Or are you already past the point, you know, in terms of capacity? Or are there programs that are like that? Like, does Bright have a model?
We have these Thursday meetings every, um, week where it's all the guidance counselors, all administration nurses, um, and adjustment counselors. So at that meeting, someone might say, I put a student who is at high need right now on the, a bridge prioritization list. So we have a running list and it's sort, it's sort of a, um, a way to rate like how often are they out of school due to their mental health struggles? You know, how behind are they in their academics? Um, so it kind of helps us figure out who do we take next if we have, honestly, if we have a week without an intake from a hospital, like we will take someone from that other category, if you will. Like category A being right out of the hospital, category B being there at high need, they're missing school. So someone needs to swoop in so that they don't get hospitalized. And honestly, two things can happen out of that. One is we support, like he was saying that his daughter got into this great program in Boston, that was through the, our, our awesome Falmouth-McLean relationship and that whole process. So lots of times we'll get kids, we'll help get kids where they need to go if they need a higher level of care. Or a bridge will be enough to get them back on their feet, back into the classroom.
Right, because, I mean, that's better.
Right. So that's where the numbers get so big, because it's not only discharge of hospitals.
I know, thank you.
I just want to say that I heard the first two young ladies who were talking say they felt they were the only ones, they were weird or they were, and the fact that you shared that with us and that you share, share it with your other, um, bridge classmates and your wonderful role models. And I, I can just feel that you've helped them a lot. So thank you for sharing with us and, and you're gonna do great in college too.
John?
I just want to say that the staff, obviously, were very, you know, impressed with what you did, you know, doing and continue to do. And for the students and the parents, I have to say that I admire you and that what you did tonight, stepping forward and being so eloquent and sharing, I have no doubt that you're making a real positive impact on other students and parents in the future. So they should be, you know, kudos for that.
Thank you.
Actually, um, Michaela and I are part of a, a teen speakers program for families for depression awareness, which is a lot like this. It's just specifically talking about our experience with depression and anxiety and hospitalizations and all of that. So we actually are actively going out to the places we travel and with our group and actually talk about it as well, so it's great.
They're experienced public speakers.
And I just want to close with, so Katie and Melissa have done such a great job that even the Bright program has, um, used our program as a model program and has suggested that other schools come and visit our program to see, um, how well it's run. So kudos to them and to the parents and students here tonight. I really appreciate you taking the time to tell your stories.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and a lot of you people should be very proud of yourselves. Parents, students, teachers, everybody involved in the bridge program should show a great deal of pride. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, first read for fuel efficient vehicle and idling policy in the town of Falmouth. Do you have that?
So I was contacted, um, by, uh, Peter Johnson Sob, and he indicated back in, uh, November, the town, uh, signed on to, uh, this policy. And in order to become a, um, green community, um, the school committee is also required to sign on. And so, um, they've asked for, uh, the school committee to consider, um, signing on to this policy. This is just the first read. Um, if you would like additional information, um, I'm looking around because I've actually invited someone to come in and speak to it. So, um, we can certainly get, uh, an opportunity. Hopefully if you would like, if you have more questions about, um, this. I, I will say that we've, uh, Patrick and I have talked to Greg Kennedy. There's not an issue, all of our vehicles are on the newer side, and so we have no issue about, uh, making sure that our, um, our vehicles meet the fuel efficiency. Um, and we certainly have, uh, our policies about no idling. But, uh, you know, we can, you know, we, we always need to monitor that. I'm just being, I don't know, Patrick, if you have anything more?
No, we don't see any problems.
Problem with it. Again, this is just the first read and, and if you have any questions, if you could, you know, let me know, we could get, get someone to answer the questions for you about this. John?
Well, just, uh, we just, you'd already defined it like the fuel efficiency are kind of within the realm of what we're doing now, so it's not pushing for propane or anything like that. And the only question that I have is, um, is on the idling, because I know there's a big push in, in, you know, in Manhattan for this and, and they actually have a campaign with Billy Idol as his spokesman. And it says Billy doesn't idle, it's a campaign. And, um, and the, but on the, on the flip side of it, I do see that, you know, with us, you know, being a little more spread out, it's not as congested. I'm just concerned if it gets a little overboard with, you know, turning off and on, because then you have, you know, the ignition challenges or something if they're constantly going off and on. It might not get to that degree, but that's just something that I think, you know, could be incorporated into the thought process. Yeah, so buses, buses, there's been, uh, there's been policies to limit buses idling in and around schools for many, many years, so the behavior.
We have signs of.
Yeah, the behavior, the, drivers understand what behavior is expected.
Terry?
Pretty soon, I don't think we'll have to make that decision because newer cars, if you are idling, they just shut off. So it's, and I remember in Germany, probably 20 years ago, um, people at the stop signs to turn your, stoplights, to turn your cars off, and I thought, what's up with that? You know, um, but I, I guess it is efficient. Anyway, like I said, new cars do it automatically, so.
You're correct on that. Any others, any other questions? Okay, so that's the first read. Do you have any questions or refer them to Patrick or, uh? We're gonna act on the collective bargaining contracts for unit A, B, C, and D. We'll do these individually. So, uh, you need a motion to approve A, which is the teacher's unit.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Sorry.
I apologize for that as well. Yes, and Terry, who is a retired educator in the school district, has recused herself.
I make a motion to accept unit A's contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Natalie is the second. Any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. All those in favor, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
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 I was gonna go get her, but I didn't know where she went.
Thank you for waiting.
Unit B, which would be the assistant principals, the SEBAS, that's special education, athletic director, department heads, director of guidance. So unit B, I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the collective bargaining contracts for unit B.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? A, a comment that I will make. As a former administrator, the degree of respect and admiration I have for assistant principals, special education, anybody administratively in the B unit, uh, I think their job is tremendously difficult and they do a tremendous job. But the old school in me is, I would love to see down the road that, uh, the sides look at the possibility of additional days to contracts. Again, the respect is without question in my mind as a assistant principal and as a head principal, but I always like that opportunity to serve kids on a longer duration and that would mean more days. Any other discussion? Vote, roll call please, John?
Yes.
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 Okay, we'll go to unit C, which would be the teaching assistants. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for unit C.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call please, John?
Yes.
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 Yes. And unit D, which is the nurses.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Thank you. Second?
I'll make a second.
Discussion? Roll call vote please?
Yes.
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 Yay!
Thank you. Job well done. We're going to act on the Mass Science and Engineering Fair at MIT, May 1st, 2020, and May 2nd, 2020. Corey, give you, Corey.
Thank you guys for having me. Uh, just report out on our fair. So the fair was on February 29th, uh, 28th and 29th, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I was fortunate to see many of you guys there and I appreciate that. Uh, I was also fortunate to have good weather, so it was the first time in a couple of years, which is great. It was a great turnout, you know, we're still working on, you know, there's some highs and lows here and there, um, but I think the overall atmosphere is very positive. And one of the things that always invigorates me is that, uh, I'm able to recruit like well over a hundred judges from the community and these aren't just your normal day-to-day citizens, these are acting, practicing engineers and scientists, which provide our students kind of a very rigorous, uh, experience, a judging experience that they don't necessarily get in all, all of the districts. Uh, and I love talking to them at the end, uh, because whether they're talking to a kindergartner or to a kid who's going off to Yale next year or something, they're always telling me just, you know, again, these are people who have, you know, uh, a lot of experience themselves, but they're also talking, they always tell me about how just amazed they are at the kids' ability to communicate, their poise, their knowledge of the subject matter, their energy and enthusiasm. Uh, and I've even had judges saying that like they could never imagine, you know, doing a project that some of these kids did when they were their age. Uh, you know, I've even had judges say like, we're still exploring this kind of stuff in our labs, uh, which is a great thing to hear, kind of reminds us why we're doing all this. So we had a great experience. Our, uh, founders award winner, we're the third grade team from T-Ticket, so congratulations to them. We are able to award our students thousands and thousands of dollars worth of prizes, uh, because we have many various and generous donors in town, which, uh, add that another little element to our fair. Um, the Falmouth STEM boosters, we're able to use donations from Windfall Market and Martha's Vineyard Bank to provide a luncheon for our juniors, not juniors, sorry, junior high students and our high school kids. Again, to kind of reward them for their hard work, uh, prior to the award ceremony. So I appreciate the STEM boosters for everything they do, not just that, but they maintain mentoring relationships and they bring in, uh, just people to talk to kids, get them thinking. They're even just constantly emailing me like, hey, you should talk to this kid about this idea and such, uh, helping those kids kind of come over the hump, because it's, it's a lot to ask these students with everything else they have going on to do the projects. Um, we sent a few number, a few kids to the regional fair the past weekend. So even though it was only three kids, which is technically a low number for us, we walked out with two prizes. You know, two out of three is actually a pretty good ratio. It's a small number, but it's a good ratio. Uh, and so two kids earned entry directly into the state fair, uh, and we're allowed to send a couple of extra kids. So we're sending the three students to the state fair. With that, um, we got an email yesterday from the state fair that said they are in limbo right now. MIT is kind of a little apprehensive to have such a, a large event. They're not outright saying that it's not gonna happen this year. They really obviously on their end want it to happen. They're not even saying it's not gonna be that weekend either, uh, but they, they have to, they might have to approach it differently than they have in the past. But as of right now, the state fair is Friday, May 2nd, May, uh, Saturday, May, sorry, Friday, May 1st, Saturday, May 2nd at MIT, uh, until we get further word. So I would just like your permission to bring those students to the state fair, should it still happen.
Motion? We're gonna, I thought we need a motion.
We need a motion to discuss it, so I'll move that we accept this, uh, request.
A second?
Second.
Now discussion, any discussion? Questions?
Yeah, I, I, so I know, I mean, I don't want to say that they shouldn't go, but I'm nervous about sending them. Do you have any thoughts? I mean, you're like knee deep in this, so.
So, yeah, so the recommendation, um, from, you know, the, you know, now our governor, from our state department, um, from the Massachusetts Health Department is, you know, we, we shouldn't be traveling, um, by, by plane and we shouldn't be in large crowds. It is gonna be a large crowd. I think that the, the information that, uh, Corey just shared with us, I think that's why they're considering the large, large crowd. I would like to think that they are going to change the format this year, um, or possibly postpone, I don't know how, you know, what, what that might look like. Uh, but they're obviously thinking about another venue, another way of possibly having it, um, either back, you know, somehow being able to judge or have it virtually. I'd like to think that that's how it'll end up. I don't know, I, I don't want them not to participate. So I think, uh, what, what I'd really like to do, from what we knew last week when we met and talked, to what we know this week when we talked, it's, it's very different and a week from now could be different as well. And so, um, would I feel comfortable right now saying yes? Would I feel comfortable in a week? I can't say that I would. And so I, I guess if we, if we could, so that we may not have to have a special meeting to come back, or maybe we do have time between now and then, um, you know, I think we, we need to find out how they're going to, um, address this, right? And I don't know if we can, you know, do a pending or a.
Or can we just approve it and then if you have to, you just pull the plug?
Yes, without having to come back on a special, special meeting if you want, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
If you want to, if you want to set the, the, um, motion or adjust the motion for that, then that would, that would give us that authority to continue to work and see what's, what's best as things progress. Because what everyone's saying, you know, this is just fluid and what we know today is gonna be different tomorrow.
So could I amend the motion? All right, so I'll amend the motion to say, we approve this pending any further developments that Lori will make the decision upon. I know, I ended with preposition, but.
Sonia forgives you.
So currently, Corey, so currently you said MIT's looking at different ways, because I know that the Ivy League basketball conference just was canceled.
So it, I mean, they sent an email yesterday and it wasn't as direct as I wish it would have been. I wish they basically said like clear cut, it's not happening or whatever. It basically said MIT is questioning any event that has any of the people larger than 150 people until May 29th or 15th or something like that. And they said on their end, you know, it sounds like MIT is trying to obviously cancel, um, but the state fair obviously wants to reward these kids for their hard work and they suggested, you know, if that doesn't happen, they're suggesting maybe like small pocket fairs, you know, put the kids in smaller numbers, which is kind of like what the regional fair was all about. Um, or doing something virtual, which would be totally new to me, but.
I, I would think MIT has enough knowledge to do something virtually with these kids.
Yeah.
Uh, from a technological standpoint, I think they would be second to none.
Yeah, right.
I read the same thing about the 150 and, and my response to that was, ah, really? So I, I, I agree with you, I wish they would have been more direct.
Yeah.
But I, I would think as things progress or do not progress, then I think those, those decisions can be made, but I think the addendum is, is appropriate. We need a second on the addendum?
Oh, second.
Any discussion on the addendum? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next. Gonna act on the Hershey Park trip, April 17th through the 20th, 2020.
So this was a, uh, a big trip that you previously approved. I'm bringing you back, um, before you. I'm bringing it back before you, tonight, with the recommendation that we cancel this trip. The teacher, the department head, and the principal, and myself are all in agreement.
And the governor.
And the governor. We can have the governor act.
Have the governor, yes. Motion?
I'll make a motion to cancel the trip, because it's out of the state.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? The only discussion point I have, that when they do go, that they still go to the city island in Hammersburg. I was looking forward to seeing them, you know, there's a beautiful bridge. Yes. Any discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor of canceling the trip?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Act on the transportation contract with Lucini? Thank you. Transportation. Motion?
I make a motion to approve the transportation contract with Lucini Transportation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The transportation contract with Lucini Transportation is passed. Act on Article Number 36, Rooftop Solar.
I would suggest that we don't act on it. I know it says "act," but that doesn't mean we have to. I think we don't typically weigh in on positioners' articles or warrant articles. And I think it would help if we, it may help Town Meeting approve something if it has support of us, but if we end up not supporting it, it would be to their detriment, and I think that's something Town Meeting should, should be deciding, not necessarily us.
Any other comments?
I'm very uncomfortable having this conversation, not with the rest of the body of Town Meeting.
Any other comments? I look at two things in this that concern me. Assess for appropriateness. And should the location be found to be economically feasible for solar collection? I guess I would like maybe a little bit more on that. So I would look to see if I could get more information, so I could look to say, I could table this from my standpoint. But if we have the appropriateness to vote on this and to suggest that we do not, then that's up to us as a group. Any other questions, concerns? So we would need then a motion to...
Table.
Table or not, to table it or not act.
I make a motion that we table the support for Article 36 Rooftop Solar.
Second.
Discussion on tabling it.
Can I just say that by tabling it, it doesn't mean that we don't think it's a good idea. We just need more information and to work with the Town Meeting members.
I would like more information. Any other comments? So we're going to act on Article Number 36 Rooftop Solar. We're going to table that. All those in favor?
Of tabling it, right?
Of tabling, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to make sure. I don't want to vote for...
Say that.
Yeah.
Yes. Second?
I already seconded. We already had a motion.
To the table, we did?
Yes.
Sorry. All those in favor of tabling it?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
One abstention. Going to act on Policy Section I. Motion to accept Policy Section I.
I'll make a motion, being on the Policy Committee, to Section I, accept it.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Policy Section?
Abstained.
Passed, and one abstention. Act on Calendar 2021-2022. That one caught me when I just looked at the dates.
Stay two, two years ahead.
Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the school calendar, 2021 to 2022.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Excuse me, discussion?
I just want to have it in the record that, like, the, the list on the back, we had not seen prior to packing, and I just want to register my objection to listing, continuing to list Columbus Day. I know we have discussed it in the past, we had the Calendar Committee, and that didn't go anywhere. But I would be going against my, you know, moral compass if I didn't acknowledge that. I think that that is a poor decision, to recognize that holiday in that way. But aside from that, I do think it is so awesome for our families that we are ahead. I think it makes everyone's life, it's just, it's so thoughtful. So I really appreciate that it wasn't a one-time deal, and we actually are sticking with that, keeping on schedule two years at a time.
Thank you. Any other comments? John?
Yeah, I just have a comment like on the other section, where it was noted to, that we agree with the governor, that I agree with the governor, that it's a state holiday, and I'm proud, as an Italian-American as well, and the history of Columbus Day also, that it is on there. And I actually am disappointed that we can't be mature enough to actually note that the non-secular reason why we have Good Friday off can't just be called that it's Good Friday as well. It has no school, but I'm fine with the fact that it's no, says no school. But that's my only comment.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the school calendar for 2021-2022?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That passes. The school calendar 2021-2022 is passed. Present Policy Section J.
Yes. So first, thank you very much for approving Section I. And just when you thought I was a long section, we introduced J. J is the longest of the sections, and there are only two sections following this. So this is the last of the, of the big collections. We're presenting it again in the same fashion in which we presented the previous sections. So it starts off with all of the standing policies. There are a couple where you're going to notice that the policy is being recoded. They're not changing, like nothing within the language is changing. They are being recoded, and then beyond that, we move into revised policies. Again, there are language changes, as well as some coding changes within there, just to make sure that we're aligned and things follow the sequence. So if you want to look back to the model manual at MASC, we're the same system. Followed by new policies. There are a number of those being introduced. Eliminated policies. Again, there is a listed those, many of which, like Section I, include language that's being moved to the student and family handbooks to cover those practices. So we're not eliminating. They're just moving to the more procedural side. And then finally, there is one item that's on hold for continued conversation, and that's listed there at the end, and the language follows at the back of the packet.
Questions for Sonia?
Do I actually entertain the questions about policy, or you want to wait until... Are we doing the next one?
Yeah. The next one is discussion, but if you have any questions.
Yeah, if you have any questions, just quickly.
No, I have a bunch of them, so I feel like that would suck up unnecessarily, so I will hold them.
Okay.
Or you can send them to me.
Okay.
Are we going to have a policy meeting before the next?
Not before the next one.
No.
Sorry.
So our next meeting's the 24th, which would be discussion, and then the 30th is our scheduled meeting, before you actually vote, so that's...
Okay, so you would have time in between our next meeting and the one...
Yes.
Then I'll just hold it on for now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Discussion? Okay, discussion on Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Student Opportunity Act, SOA.
So you know, last year we had, and in the fall, we had a lot of conversation about the Chapter 70 and the reform. And the Student Opportunity Act is the result of that. It's passed. We have the, the governors proposed. Now, it still has the budget part of it, has to be passed through the House and Senate. So we'll be waiting through the budget process for the money that was actually allocated. But prior to that, each district has a plan that is due April 1st to the State Department. So they split the districts, districts that are getting more than 1.5 million have a long form. Those that are getting less than 1.5 million can complete the short form. And they, if you select a research-based program, I don't want to say program, because it's not really a program, but a strategy, I'll do a strategy, then they encourage that, right? If you want to go outside the box of that, you can also, but they did give a, a pretty much pre-approval on certain strategies. We are slated to have, if it passes through the budget, 96,600 and some, almost 97,000. But as Chapter 70 works, the money goes through to the town. And so we may or may not see those dollars. So it's going to be kind of difficult, and the other superintendents agree, as we were talking, it's kind of difficult to plan on how to use the money, and we may or may not see that. But with that said, with positive intent, we are moving forward, and we have, I want to, we want to share tonight. I'm going to have Sonia share tonight what our plan is around. And then we do have a community forum. It's in your packet. I want to just, you know, state next Wednesday, March 18th, at 6:30 at Morse Pond, and we invite everyone to come. And just here, we'll share a little bit more about the plan. You can actually show the plan out. We actually just got the form late this afternoon to complete, so we don't have it for you tonight to share, because we just got it. So let's talk a little bit about what we think that we wanted to do anyway, regardless of whether the Student Opportunity Act was coming our way or not. There are some positive things that we wanted to move forward with, so Sonia.
Thank you. We're looking at our early learners, our youngest learners, from pre-K to kindergarten and perhaps extending into first and second grade. We've been really looking at studying their literacy curriculum. We've been studying their math curriculum. The math coaches, the elementary literacy manager have been helping with that. And so we're looking at possibly changing the way in which we communicate their growth and success outside of the report card structure, with something that is more relevant to them as, as young learners, as well as to their families, and sort of measuring their success over time, as opposed to a more traditional report card method. And then along with that, aligning our professional learning, our P.D., and knowing that, to the point that you raised about having two years of the calendar, articulating what that professional learning would be over those two years, and knowing those days are set aside. So we're looking at putting that together and, and building that out, and just putting that into our vertical alignment plan across all disciplines.
I've never thought about the fact that having the calendar actually allows for planning professional development. So it's good for you too.
Lots of different ways, right?
It's awesome.
Yeah. It's been pretty powerful to set the tool up and put the days, and then sit down and figure out how to do things over time, a lot of that.
Any other questions, briefly?
I think it's, I think that sounds really great, and just, you know, working with the younger population, I think it's great to kind of step back from that whole academic role, even though it's important. But, you know, sometimes a report card in kindergarten might not be the best way to kind of gauge what children are learning. So I think anything we can do to encourage kids to play and be social and learn the rules of society, and, you know, get a little away from the rigidness of report cards, I think is great. It's my personal opinion.
So we started conversations with the math coaches, elementary literacy manager, the principals, to start building some awareness and capacity, and figuring out what that means to bring teachers on board, and what that means for the demand on time, and ultimately what the timeline would be following it out. Thank you. It's exciting.
Any questions? Thank you.
Is our, is our maker spaces aligned in with this thinking too? I mean, where individuals have opportunities, so we're kind of on board with that aspect, right?
Yes, absolutely. Yes. Thank you for thinking of that, Terry.
Would this be a good observation?
Well, sure.
In case anyone's looking for something. I don't know, I'm just thinking people might be interested and be there anyway, so...
Right.
Conduct routine business. Approvements of February 25th, 2020. Motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 25th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for, to approve the minutes from February 25th, 2020 is approved. Approved minutes for March 3rd, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 3rd, 2020.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved minutes for March 3rd, 2020 is passed. Update on capital plan by Mr. Murphy.
Sure. Thank you very much for a few minutes. I just want to make sure that the school committee is aware of what's, will be going on in a couple of our schools. Our capital process is a long process. It literally started the day after money was approved in November at the Town Meeting. They calls one out to, to start the process. We have two projects that have very heavy procurement and design processes that are, we're, we're bringing to, we're bringing to the end of Phase 1 of awarding the contract, and then we'll be starting the projects this, this summer. So the first one is the East Falmouth Project, which is the unit vent and control replacement. That's the second phase of replacing the boilers. We're in the process of reviewing contracts now. I just want to give it to the school committee's attention. I'm in contact with the vendor. The turnaround time between, to order the unit vents is typically about 12 weeks. We need them to start the day after school starts, so we're going to be doing some back and forth. The reason I'm bringing that to your attention is, is based upon our calendar of meetings. We might be asking to move forward with a letter of intent or something like that, just to make sure, before completing the contract, just to make sure that the, the vendor has the ability to order the equipment. And the second project, which will again come to your attention over the next few meetings, is the Morse Pond Ceiling Replacement Project. That's our effort to remove all of the ceiling tiles that have our ACM, asbestos-containing materials in Morse Pond. Just 45 minutes ago, I received a call from the OPM, there were 10 bidders for that project, which is huge. So we got very competitive bids. Very pleased with how that's going. Again, we're going to be on a time constraint to make sure that that vendor is ready to start that project as soon as school is up. So if I start getting pushy about getting contracts in front of you, that's why. We got to get these contractors ready to go into our payments.
Kids, go out. Construction people, come in. Questions for Patrick?
And if you think of questions on any of these projects, just give me a call.
Thank you. Superintendent report.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you. Okay, so we've had a busy couple of weeks. So Principal Gans and I attended an awards ceremony at the Falmouth Police Department. Our own S R O, Ryan Hurt, was announced and recognized as the Police Officer of the Year. And we couldn't agree more. It's just, it's awesome. So it was a very nice event. I also, three of our students were also recognized. Actually, Officer Hurt put their names forward for kind of being the heroes and stepping in on a situation. In the school, they actually de-escalated on their own before staff could even get there. And it actually turned out exactly what we would want it to. And so the three students were actually recognized for that too. So that was nice to have those recognitions. The, we had a homework advisory committee meeting. And during that time, we reviewed policies from five other Massachusetts school districts that within the last few years have also worked on their policies, so we could see some of the changes that they've made. So we're on schedule. We have two more meetings scheduled and then hopefully we'll have some recommendations and be able to move forward. So very pleased with that. Lori Dubuque said everything wonderful about the science fair that I was going to say. I just echo everything he said. It's a, it's a great event. The students are fantastic. Their projects are very relevant and exciting and so, good for them. I will bring in about the Makerspace because the T-Ticket third grade group project, the students actually tested out their theories in the Makerspace, so that's how they built theirs. So it was, it was great. They were so proud of how they did it, so that was pretty awesome. It was Read Across America and we had our central office staff go out and read. So I just got a couple snapshots there of Dr. Tellier and Dr. Santa reading to the students. So that's always a lot of fun to pick our books and get out there. We had, last week and Monday night, we were out, the school, all of you, but to tell everyone else, we were out gathering information on our draft mission, vision and core values. And I am proposing that we have a workshop on March thirty-first to review the feedback and to finalize the mission, vision and core values. So that would work. So Tuesday night is a.
Thirty.
The thirty-first?
Thirty-first.
Yeah, thirty-first. Our next school committee meeting is in two weeks on the twenty-fourth, and then that would be the week after that if people are available so that we can actually share something out. We will actually meet our timeline if we get something out in April, which is pretty exciting.
Is there a time for that or? Yeah, do you want to know now if we can all make it?
Yeah, if you want to, that'd be great. If you, if you can, we can set it to whatever time you want. I just was suggesting a Tuesday since we're normally scheduled for Tuesdays. So at five thirty, we were doing five thirty to seven. Sorry, go ahead. No, I was just saying, we were, our other workshops were five thirty to seven.
Okay. Which one?
I can do it.
Excellent, thank you. We just need to send it out to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mine drive thirty.
Yeah, share it, share it off, send that out. March thirty-first, okay. So Sonya, you want to talk a little bit about the next one, our spring partnership?
Sunny, yesterday Lori and I had the opportunity to meet with our liaisons from each of the agencies. And we talked a little bit about some of the preparations, both for upcoming learning opportunities for our students as well as for the partnership forums. So we sent a template out today if they want to pitch new ideas or if they want to pitch ideas that will extend the three strands that are going on right now and then being able to report out on progress. So our elementary focus on the relationship between people and the earth. We're working on the Earth Day Summit, we're working on the Green Bus Tour. So we're looking at how that's coming together. And I heard from our elementary math coaches that they're looking at pitching an idea that connects into that for this year. So that's one of the big things we're looking forward to at the forum. Our middle grades, we have our extended group looking at going out to Cuddy Hunk to grow that pilot among other opportunities. So we're looking potentially for another pitch in that opportunity. And then at the high school level, our partnership with U S G S has added Woods Hole Research Center to that and they're extending their look at mapping and how they use some of the data to create some of the visuals to really track change over time. So it's continuing to grow. We're going to be reporting out on those three strands as well as welcoming pitches to continue to develop opportunity.
So I invite all of you to join, join us if you can. Could be another opportunity for. Kelly? Oh, we've done it.
Right?
Okay. All right, yes, we will. Well, we're on our new timeline.
You can observe this for next.
For next year, there you go. So when we, we're at North Falmouth, our, Jack, our student liaison presented a couple of different things and we said we would gather information. So the first one was on the funding for Falmouth High School Clubs. Patrick, would you like to speak to that, please?
Sure, Mary Gans and I did meet with, with the student and as I pointed out in the little memo, there was only one specific instance that he was raising. Principal Gans is, is very consistent in her messaging to club advisors around sort of if there's supplies and materials that are needed to help, that we can support that. If young people are having trouble with funding for special events or trips, it doesn't have to be club related, anything related to schools that we need to identify those students and find ways to make sure that they are participating. So it felt like the, from Principal Gans' perspective, our messaging out to club advisors and staff is pretty consistent, so. Anything else?
That's good, thank you. And then the second issue that he had brought up was about the weighted grading. Sonya, do you want to speak to that? There's a.
Sure.
Memo in the.
So I also had the opportunity to speak with Principal Gans. And Principal Gans and I spoke with Jack, so the three of us met together as well, just to get a little bit more clarity. He had shared with us that he had surveyed some of his peers, so we wanted to understand how far reaching the survey was. And so we dug a little deeper and then I had an opportunity to also speak to some of the other instructional leadership members at the high school because through the self-study and the N E S process in which they're engaged and that sort of introspection that the school community is going through, they've been studying their ranking and GPA systems as well. And then they've also been reaching out to the Cape and Islands community to understand what other districts are doing around that. And I think even the link to some of the stories that the students shared with us tonight about Bridge, talking a lot about anxiety and the competition that they're creating and actually really talking to admissions counselors. And so there's an article in there that I cited and I could also print it and make it available to you, which was really a great compilation of talking to admissions counselors, high school guidance counselors, and bringing that all together and just looking at the fact that each institution runs its own formula anyway for admissions purposes. And they actually disregard a lot of the formulas that we use in our schools. So there is a bigger national dialogue around actually moving away from some of the waiting systems. And we already don't honor valedictorian and salutatorian because our ranking system is set up in deciles. It's only when a college, university or scholarship application asks for it that that information even is divulged. But some of the other districts around us, including Knoxville, are only reporting to the students and therefore the applications, those deciles. So it's just, you know, a great opportunity to sit down, both with Principal Gans and then to sit with some of the instructional leadership members and understand more about the depth of the conversation they're having and how they're going to be having that as well with students.
I would enjoy the opportunity to get some of your information and read it. I would like to see how it's changed bar, progressing to whatever the terminology may be. I'd like to take a good look at that. Thank you.
I, I really appreciated this. I found this so interesting and it was not at all the way that I initially thought about it. So I just, I really, first of all, I really appreciate that we took the time to like actually look at our student advisories issues and do some research and then follow up on it. But I, I just really appreciate it. I thought it completely changed my opinion on the whole thing, just by reading this one memo. So thank you for that.
Any other questions for Sonya?
Okay, just a reminder that the F E F Gala, the Falmouth Education Foundation Gala is Saturday, March twenty-first at six o'clock. And the reception is seven o'clock dinner. There's a picture in here that just doesn't do it justice, but it does because it's beautiful. But if, I really encourage, it's just big and overwhelming and it's, there's two sides. This is only one picture. But at North Falmouth, this was one of the grants that, that North Falmouth had received and they had the artists come in. And it's just fascinating, the mural going into north. And then the students are now making their own three-D characters or fish or whatever they want to imagine based on being able to read the story and the article. And it's really, you know, kind of cool. So I did want to share that. It's, it's nice. So I just wanted to, I put out a memo yesterday for everyone about how the Falmouth Public School is reacting to, responding to the broader outbreak. We certainly are not at a point yet in Falmouth that there's any presumptive cases. But it is, I think, very important enough for us to be preventive and to educate as much as we can. And I think from the other districts, the superintendents, it's one of the things that they're sharing out, is making sure that we are ahead of the message as much as we can in the school district prior to there being any incidents. And so I just really appreciate the colleagues that are going before us to have to deal with things that is certainly helping us make things go smoother and so.
Have we, have you thought of anything about if we were to have to close a school? I mean, maybe I shouldn't be asking that, but it's, I think it's on our heads, isn't it?
Yeah.
I think it's on everyone's mind.
Yeah.
I mean, it absolutely may be possible that that will be the recommendation. What is being told from us, from everyone, is that we need to work very closely with our local health department, which is getting the guidance from the Massachusetts Health Department and CDC. And so all decisions will be made as a team. I think that I shared that, you know, we now have a command team, all the department heads coming together. We are weekly, we're working to stay abreast of all new information and it is developing daily as you, obviously, all the news reports coming out, share with that. So, you know, if that's, if that is the case, then, you know, we would have, we'd have to make that decision. We're prepared to do that if need be. I think the most important thing we're doing right now is the cleaning, the vigilance of teaching the kids about the hand washing, which is the absolute most important, the sneezing and the coughing and the elbow, you know. And I think our staff is really good about making sure that we're, we're really staying on top of all those pieces. And I think that's what we can do right now. Those are our preventive measures of, even with the flu. And we've been checking our attendance numbers. I will say that it really has not changed much over the course of the flu season. And I think that's just a testament that we are really, that we put measures in even with the flu. And I think that we're, we're not seeing drastic decline in attendance numbers. So it says a lot for our, our staff and our schools and our families, but staying on top of things.
Along with that, are we in any way prepared for any kind of virtual teaching? Do we have anything we can do in that direction? Again, I don't mean to be pessimistic and panic minded, but.
Yeah, no, I think it's an absolute good question and I would like to discuss that. I know that in the news, colleges are daily. Our colleges are already set up and their, their system has been for years to be able to do that. We are going to be there. We're not quite there yet. I don't know, would you like to speak a little bit on the side about how we are getting prepared for that when the day comes? But there just needs to be some professional learning before we get there.
We have secured a learning management system, so SchoolAG is going to be our provider. We're working with our Tech for Learning, which is our steering committee, to build that out. We've done some training. In the interim, we're also looking at some of the programs that we've been using and building those out and trying to provide access for those. So before all of our courses are built out as full online courses, some of the tools we're using and being able to use those. So we are actually meeting to have continuity of learning, planning sessions, which is really about like if we do have to close for a day, a week, up to two weeks, whatever the case may be, we have plans around the continuity of learning, which may include, you know, students using found materials in their home to go through a math exercise or using books that may be available at home to move through a literacy exercise. So we're starting to put some of those ideas together. And I've begun to talk with several of the members of our teaching and learning team. And so we're going to be building into some bigger conversations in the coming days.
Joe?
Well, we, we have a virtual classroom now, it's just scalability, right? I mean, we do have for one, you know, for individuals.
We absolutely have some opportunities, but it's just that we are not at scale in Falmouth yet.
The other thing I was going to say is, is, you know, great job, you and the whole team, you know, throughout all the schools, the principals, the teachers, the admin, you know, everyone and the bus drivers. It's uncharted territory, you know, uncharted waters that you're navigating. And with the notion of sharing, I was actually on a conference call this afternoon, Mass Restaurant Association, National Restaurant Association. I'm going to share some best practices, getting more of the details of that call. I'll share.
That's fantastic, thank you.
Kelly?
So like we were just talking about with MIT and the smaller, whatever, gatherings or whatever they're calling them, is there any guidance about things like that? Because that's something, it's not that I'm worried about like the day-to-day school. I know school is going to go on for now, we hope. But the extra things like after-school concerts or sporting events, things where lots of people gather and in a community that's, you know, it looks like kids are really resilient with this. But we live in like the oldest county in America, I think outside of Florida. So I worry about our older population and all our little people being vectors all over the place. So is there any guidance about what to do preventatively to protect our community as well?
So that's going to end up changing daily too. I'm not trying to get out of the answer for that. I'll just give you a couple of examples. Tomorrow night, we have All Bands Night and that is a Falmouth activity. And so we are moving forward with that, although it is well-attended. You know, we do not have a presumptive case in Falmouth and we feel safe that we can move forward with that. But we do recommend, as the Commissioner Riley put out today, that, that we encourage our older community and people that are, their immune system is at risk, that they may want to wait and watch it. So it is going to be filmed and then it'll be on channel fourteen. So there's an opportunity for them to see. So I think that, you know, we want people to make good decisions around that. On the opposite end of that, we were hosting a regional music opportunity on Friday and Saturday at the high school. And that meant many districts in Massachusetts in our regional area, larger, also includes the south.
Close.
East part of Massachusetts and the Cape and Islands. And we did cancel that because it is the larger community, it was a very large and it was, you know, bringing a large number in our, our school at that time. So with an abundance of caution, that may have been fine, but I think that's where we're right now. That could change daily, right? We could have more information tomorrow. There is a, a call that the departments, the health departments are on tomorrow. They may learn new guidance, which we will receive at our meeting on Friday. And by Friday, there may be additional information. So I just want to make sure that people understand that if we put out something and say something today, in two days, that could be different. And I ask people to, to be understanding about that. So right now, that's our thinking, that anything that's local, we had, still had the art show last night at Lawrence, but it was, you know, contained to the, to the one area. But again, if, you know, you have a compromised immune system, the older generation, which this seems to be attacking, we, you know, we ask you to make good decisions, right? And if there's ways that we can film or ways that we can share it and other, you know, ways, the events, because they are wonderful events and we don't want to. ways, the events, because they are wonderful events, and we don't want to, students not to be able to showcase, right? But it is, they're trying times, and I think we have to figure out how to balance. Just adding into that, Commissioner Riley, a couple of days ago, put out some guidance around the 180-day requirement, since you'd asked about the, that piece of it, I just want to share a little bit, and it just got updated as of today. So, I was going to share the March 6th guidance, but I'm going to share the March 10th guidance because it's changed. So, so as far as the day scheduling, from the first day of school through March 15th, we need to reschedule full days as, as we would normally do. If we reach up, from March 16th to June 1st, we need to make sure that we're reaching our previously scheduled days up to that 185, 185th day. And then, any days after June 1st will not be expected to be made for, made up. So, those dates actually got tweaked between the 6th and 10th, and this is where we are now. That, again, might change next week, right? And so, I just want to know that they're, they're on top of it, they're providing us guidance around the requirement days and, and days that may, may be forgiven, and, and we'll just continue to look at that and stay on top of it. Right now, we've had a great winter, even though, you know, it's been a really great winter. We've only, we had the day in October, right, that was because of the, the storm and the trees down, so we only have one day on that. So, right now, we're looking pretty good, so. So, that's that. And then, I just wanted to also kind of shout out about the water bottles, and we had our showcase of delivery. We picked Morse Pond School, it was just one school where they brought the big truck in, and students came out, and they got their water bottles. Kelly and Terry were there, and it was good, it was kind of exciting to get them delivered, and so they'll be passed out. So, every student and staff member will get a water bottle, and they can write their names on it. Terry, Terry already has her name on it, because part of, of, you know, the flu season is that we do not share, so make sure your name gets on it, and we are telling the, the students, personal items are your personal items, and so don't share. So, we're excited about, you know, and thank you again to the Fraser Construction Company, 4,500 bottles were delivered, so we appreciate that. And one last thing that I actually, is actually so complicated, I actually need a little bit of notes to help me with this, but we have the Massachusetts Educational Technology Administrative Association Award to give out tonight. So, Mike Falcone, will you please come over? I want to give you the award. This guy has a, I'm going to say a little bit about this. He actually attended a 14-week online course that actually awarded him the Chief Technology Officer Certificate, and from what I understand, here you go, I'm going to let you say a few words about it, from what I understand, this was an extremely difficult course to take, but it certainly is going to enhance our district, the ability that he learned, not only on the IT side, but how the IT and the instructional world work together, and it's so nice to have, you know, an IT director that, you know, really understands our instructional side, so that we are going to get closer to being able to do our online work when, when we need to or when it makes sense, so. Would you like to say a little bit about the course?
It was a great course. Literally a couple hours of work every day for 14 or 15 weeks.
Wow.
It was at the same time as helping out Coach Cross Country and training for a marathon, and coming to work.
And coming to work every day.
Basically, for three months, had not much of a life outside of that, but it's been very beneficial already for my job here. I don't think I'd be doing nearly as good of a job without having taken this course, so.
Congratulations.
That's great. Yeah. Thank you. Actually...
Good job.
Phil, can I just say, when I didn't want to cut you off with the, I hate to go back, but I just wanted to, regarding the coronavirus and the attendance for, for students, I think there's a lot of pressure for kids to come to school every day, and they don't want to miss school, and I feel like there should be some conversation in the classroom about, you know, if you're sick, you need to stay home, because that is how we can kind of eliminate a lot of this from happening, and I just know there is a lot of pressure to come to school.
Thank you for saying that publicly. So, I, what I was referring to was during the flu season, I think that our kids have been healthy, but absolutely, our message is, and daily, we have actually suspended all of our recognition for attendance because we want kids to stay home. Teachers are being flexible with assignments and assessments, so that students do not feel like they have to come in to take, that all will all be worked out, and there will not be penalties for students that are home. So, even though, so if that comes to the point here where students need to, you know, be in a quarantine for a 14-day situation, that will not count again. So, we're really just downplaying the attendance. When I said, so thank you for the opportunity for me to, to kind of backtrack on that. My point was during the flu season, back in January, February, before the coronavirus even came out, I think that our, our increased cleaning really was helping kids stay, stay healthy, but the, the nurses are absolutely, when kids are sick, they go home. We encourage parents to keep kids home. That's one of the best preventive methods we could absolutely have, so.
And the teachers, too. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, teachers, exactly. Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Committee member reports? Requested follow-up information? Any future items? Any announcements? And I leave you with a quote. "The time is right to do what is right," Martin Luther King. Motion to adjourn.
Doesn't Melissa do that?
I, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.